Good afternoon, I'm David Zimmer with Center of the American Experiment. And I'd like to welcome you to our webinar entitled Back to Session, which we hope will help you, the viewer, gain a proper understanding of the facts surrounding the School Resource Officer Debate that has dominated public safety discussion in recent weeks. As of today, at least thirty-one police departments and sheriff's offices across our state have made the difficult decision to suspend their SRO programs until the issue is resolved. But make no mistake, this is a significant concern to all law enforcement agencies, not just those who have pulled their officers from schools. The SRO issue created in the legislature through poor legislative process has arguably become the most significant public safety issue to arise recently. And given its timing, as students are returning to class, the issue is particularly relevant and particularly concerning to all Minnesotans. I've set three goals for this webinar. First, to accurately describe the concerns of law enforcement after the passage of education law, which impacted use of force authority by SROs. Two, to identify how the issue came about and how it can be avoided in the future. And three, identify some solutions to the problem. To help us meet those goals, we have assembled a terrific group of panelists today. So joining me today are Representative Peggy Bennett from District Twenty-three A in Albert Lee. Representative Bennett is a retired educator in her fifth term as a state representative and serves on the Education Policy and Finance Committees. Representative Walter Hudson from District Thirty A in northeastern Wright County, which includes Saint Michael, Albertville. Representative Hudson is in his first term and serves as on the Public Safety Policy and Finance Committees. Senator Zach Duckworth from District Fifty-seven in Lakeville. Senator Duckworth is in his second term and serves as the Senate Assistant Minority Leader and sits on the Education Policy Committee. Chief Mark Schultz of the Wayzata Police Department. Chief Schultz has served as a police officer since nineteen ninety-eight and became Wayzata's Chief of Police in two thousand twenty-one. Interestingly, Chief Schultz has served as a School Resource Officer or SRO during his career and will share his personal insight into that role. Chief Schultz made the decision September first to suspend his SRO program with the Wayzata School Department or District and will explain how and why he came to that decision. Chief Brad Paulson from the Lakeville Police Department. Chief Paulson has served as a police officer since two thousand and two and as Lakeville's Chief of Police since June twenty twenty-two. Chief Paulson made the decision a few weeks ago to keep his SRO serving in schools and will offer insight on the process he took to come to that decision. And finally, Catherine Wigfall. Catherine is an educator by trade and transitioned into education policy work in two thousand seventeen as a fellow and a colleague of mine here at Center of the American Experiment. Welcome to each of the panelists and thank you for your participation today. The roadmap for this webinar is as follows. I'm going to start by providing a brief uh set of opening comments to lay out some of the chronology of the events that have led us here today. We'll then transition into discussion with our panelists to flesh out the problems and possible solutions related to the SRO debate. And finally, we'll end with a period of audience questions whereby I'll select some questions and solicit responses from our panel. So what is the issue and what is all the fuss about regarding SROs? Let me break it down into some easily digestible and accurate explanations. This is about ambiguous language that was inserted into education law this past session, which has created conflicting use of force authorization for police officers. One of the officer, uh, the officers contracted as school resource officers and one for those, uh, just the general police officers at large. You might ask, so what? What's such a big deal about that language? Well, it's a big deal because the real value of SROs is that they are onsite police officers first and foremost who have developed relationships and have skills, training, and authority to resolve public safety issues in a school setting. When a school calls on an SRO, it is understood and expected that they bring unique skills, training, and authority beyond that which a teacher, an administrator, or another school employee brings to a situation. That authority, which in our past has represented an appropriate and welcome tool to help resolve issues, has now been lost uh through the ambiguity created in the education bill language. The language prohibits SROs from using any amount of force or restraint in situations unless there is an imminent threat of bodily harm and death or death. This is the interpretation of the legal community representing a variety of police organizations and the interpretation of Attorney General Keith Ellison, who issued a legal opinion on the matter. Given the vast number of incidents SROs are involved in that don't involve bodily harm or death, the language puts SROs in the absurd position of having to call another police officer not bound by this language to respond and resolve an issue that might require minimal force, such as a simple escort or handcuffing. Let me be clear, this is not about police wanting to choke children. That's an absurd argument that has been made by many and and if you get your news from Twitter, you'll see that a lot. Chokeholds are already prohibited in use of force statute, so that that is not the issue. No, this is about police operating under a single, clear use of force statute that authorize authorizes appropriate use of force application for the job our police officers are trained for and are asked and expected to perform. So with that introduction, let's go to our panelists and flesh this out a bit. I'd like to start with our legislators and discuss the genesis of this issue, uh, the calls for police reform and correctional reform following the civil unrest in twenty twenty. Representative Bennett, um, you were serving at the time. And while I know that you weren't sitting on public safety committees at the time, can you share with us your recollections about the legislative response in committees and in the full legislature to begin addressing use of force law, um, and maybe how that began to bleed over into education and and SROs?
Sure, David, and thanks so much for having us all here. This is a good place to discuss and flesh this issue out. Um. It's been a pleasure to serve on those education committees and then just with my background, I taught thirty-three years, mostly first grade. I was in elementary schools, but well aware of what was happening in high schools as well. Um, the the process or the the whole, the whole issue here, I think, comes from uh concern. Um, there's a number of people that say schools have become a, you know, prison pipeline for students. And um, there's this misnomer, I believe, that somehow law enforcement being there is contributing to this. I I don't agree with that, but that's, I'll just explain, that's kind of the the background. Um. This particular law, and I don't know if you want me to get into this part, was a small component in a huge omnibus bill that was presented by the Governor's Office and uh authored by our Chair, DFL Chair in both Policy and Finance Committees. And so it was a very small portion with a whole bunch of other education items that were quite controversial. And it did not really get light of day. I mean, we saw it, didn't have any idea the impact of some of that language because it did not get good vetting in our committees. Really, we heard no testimony on it. It should have gone to public safety. It didn't. So part of a huge omnibus bill, you could get me on omnibus bills and I could talk a lot about those. They're not a good way to legislate. And this is a good example of why they're not a good way to legislate. You get really bad legislation that doesn't get vetted properly. And now we end up with a law that's not working.
Great, thanks. So going back to, you know, the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, um, maybe I'll ask this of Chief Paulson and and Schultz. The twenty twenty-one Police Reform Bill was passed and that further defined use of force authority for police officers in statute six oh nine point oh six. Um, and maybe this is a good time, uh, if our facilitator can put that uh law up on the screen. But that specifically prohibits chokeholds and other restraints that could inhibit breathing. Uh, chiefs, if if one of you want to take this, uh, can you describe how these changes were accepted by and incorporated into law enforcement training? And how that prohibition relates to the SRO issue we're talking about today?
Well, I could certainly start, uh, um, David, thanks you. Thank you for having us and um, Mark Schultz from Wayzata Police Department. Um, you know, the 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 amendments that you talk about, uh, were really some things that we had, uh, been practicing internally for years. And so um, there has been talk about chokeholds and their efficacy and their and and, you know, whether or not they belong in a use of force spectrum for for many years. And um, with that, we decided that we weren't going to be using them at all way prior to this, this, uh, this new, um, this new language. And so most of which, um, was presented in this, we had already been doing for for quite some time and our officers were well-trained on it. Um, there were no, um, you know, curveballs, if you will. And um, and and you know, there are other implications of this too, like duty to intercede, duty to report. And those are all ethical things that we had been promoting for for many years as well. So, um, but uh, yeah, it's, you know, it seems like over the last several years, there have been this this wave of of scrutiny and focus on how to change the language to further regulate, uh, six oh nine oh six.
Great, thank you. So I just want to point out a couple of things that I've highlighted on this statute. So this is the governing statute for use of force by police officers in our state. And you can see that it authorizes reasonable force up here at the top in a number of circumstances, including in the exercise of lawful authority to restrain a child or pupil or to prevent or to prevent bodily harm or death to another. And then, of course, the in two thousand twenty-one, down at the bottom, some of the limitations that Chief Schultz just spoke about were added, chokeholds and and other things. So you can go ahead and remove that from the screen. Thank you. Um. Jumping ahead to twenty twenty-three, let's talk about the legislative process and and Representative Bennett alluded a little bit to this, but maybe I can move on to Representative Hudson. Um. Can you share with viewers the norm and the proper legislative process that is followed when a new proposal or new language is introduced?
Well, as a first-term member of the House of Representatives, I'm I'm perhaps, uh, limited in my capacity to define normal because my first exposure to the legislative process was the twenty twenty-three Legislative Session, which by all accounts, if you ask people who've been haunting those halls at the Capitol for any number of years, uh, has been a highly unusual and abnormal and atypical um legislative session. But, you know, just applying some logic and reason to what a legislative process should look like. We have all of these different committees that are broken down in all these different jurisdictions of law. And when language is proposed in a bill, um, and in particular, when you have a large bill uh, that has language that covers multiple different jurisdictions, it it is both traditional and appropriate for that bill to be heard in each committee where it, the language touches upon that committee's jurisdiction. And so in this case, you had language inserted into the Education Omnibus Bill that obviously very directly affected public safety. It affects, it affects the ability of school resource officers to do their job. It puts a limitation upon what otherwise would be considered reasonable use of force. We probably should have had a conversation about that in the Public Safety Committee, but we didn't. And as a result, uh, the the full impact of it, even though, as I'm sure Senator Duckworth will attest to, there were some conversations, uh, about the impact of that language, and I'm sure Representative Bennett Bennett can talk about that as well in the education committees. But it wasn't discussed in public safety. It wasn't discussed in a format where the um, the various public safety organizations and law enforcement agencies could truly focus in on that provision specifically and give their feedback in terms of how it will be implemented and what the impact would be on schools, which is why we are in essence having this sort of ad hoc Public Safety Committee debate in public view as the school year is starting in twenty twenty-three.
Great, thank you. Senator Duckworth, um, as Representative Hudson mentioned, um, I came across a video of you raising this issue back in February or March uh, in your Senate Education Committee. Um, did the DFL leadership ever heed your advice to seek out law enforcement stakeholders so we could avoid the mistakes that were made?
Uh, well, I appreciate the question. Uh, yeah, it was mid-February and, uh, I won't speak for them because I don't know exactly what they did or didn't do. But if I were to make some assumptions or guesses based on what's happened, I'd say clearly, I don't think that they visited with uh, several of the law enforcement agencies or those that represent law enforcement to get their their thoughts on how this might impact school resource officers. And to be honest with you, when we had it in committee, um, that was really all I said. I said, hey, uh, I happen to actually read the bill. There's a provision in here, being a former school board member, that caught my attention. It relates to school resource officers. Have we even chatted with law enforcement or school officials to ask them, hey, how's this actually going to play out in the real world, in your buildings, in classrooms, in hallways, when students are, you know, tussling with one another and something has to be done to prevent injury or prevent something from escalating? Uh, and it was a very cordial kind of suggestion to say, hey, you might want to consider doing your due diligence on this provision of the bill to make sure we're not going to pass a law that has unintended consequences. And here's what else I'll say. Uh, folks like to say, well, we didn't hear anything about this during session. Well, first and foremost, it was raised in the Senate in February. And second, well, we didn't know necessarily what the repercussions were going to be until law enforcement actually found out about the bill and had to start applying it to their departments. That's when it, of course, became a a a large issue. And that's what we're trying to correct here, David. So I appreciate you putting this on so that we can have a conversation, share information transparently without all the political filters that sometimes get added on social media and whatnot. Uh, but the good news is, and I think for the end of this conversation, folks are going to realize there's a real easy way to fix this so we can get school resource officers right back in those buildings to keep kids safe.
Perfect. And and we will definitely get to that. Um, that's a key to this entire webinar here. Um, at this point, if I can ask the moderator to pull up, um, the actual sections of education law that we are talking about here, and we'll just take a look at at what got added and why, why this is a problem. So this first section, yep, just hold it right there. Uh, I actually scroll down, scroll down to the Corporal Punishment section. There we go. So this is the section that tends to get, in my opinion, tends to get all of the attention. And it, to me, it's a little misleading because and the and the chiefs can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think law enforcement is having a lot of heartburn over this section. This section is the section that talks about not, you know, allowing uh chokeholds, not allowing prone restraints and such. And and the prone restraint and uh straddling a pupil's torso, that's open to some discussion. I I think law enforcement does have some concern with those provisions, but in general, this section and and this rewording isn't causing law enforcement a great deal of heartache. Um. Chief Schultz, Chief Paulson, do you want to comment on that?
Well, thank you, Dave, uh, for, uh, like the others I've mentioned, for hosting today and and getting us all together here to chat about the issue. Uh, and yeah, you know, for the most part, I think we would agree the corporal punishment piece here that you've got up on the screen isn't the the major area of concern. There is the the prone restraint. And I will say, you know, our officers and officers across the state are trained, um, in one of the the most, uh, I'd say the safest way to put someone in handcuffs, if you have the, a scenario that ultimately uh, goes to that level is to have, um, a non-compliant person face down. It doesn't mean someone's kneeling on top of them, doesn't mean someone's impeding their their breathing. But if you've got a situation, and fortunately, you know, they're they're not frequent, but they can happen when you get thousands of of kids and staff members together. If you get a situation where you have a non-compliant person, uh, and you need them face down to just secure them in handcuffs and then quickly put them in a recovery position where they can, uh, you know, be in a little bit safer spot. The the best and safest way to do that for not just officers, but for the individual being handcuffed is to have them uh, either kneeling or face down. We just don't want, uh, the wording to cause issues with officers that are trained in in this technique that's been, um, shown to be safe. Um, you know, it 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 circles back to having one that of use of force, uh, statutes for our for our staff to abide by. We're in, uh, all kinds of different settings throughout the day, from schools to senior living facilities to, uh, movie theaters, restaurants. Uh, we deal with children, we deal with adults who have, uh, who can get combative with memory care issues. Our officers are trained in in dealing with those situations. You know how to ramp up and ramp down to deescalate. They do that all the time. And they do that with with students all the time in the schools. But uh, to take all of the the tools away or to to create confusion, uh, is is problematic. When it comes to use of force, um, it happens rarely, but the stakes are pretty high when it comes into play. And if we don't have clarity or training on it, we're asking for 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 problems. And that's that's our our biggest concern with this overall.
Right. Great, thank you, chief. If we can scroll down now to the the other, uh, section. And this is entitled Reasonable Force. And this is really, in my opinion, where the crux of the issue. Because it, on the top, you'll see the two thousand two version of the section and on the bottom, the two thousand twenty-three uh, version. And what was added, um, is is that simple word to prevent bodily harm and death. And that's causing a lot of the heartache here, uh, because in effect, what it's doing is um, prohibiting law enforcement from using any force whatsoever to restrain a child, to deal with a a child or student um, in a variety of situations that don't involve bodily harm or death. And that's really the majority of situations that an SRO is going to be dealing with a student. It's, uh, they're not all bodily harm and death situations. There are trespass situations, uh, minor drug offenses and and, uh, damage to property and all kinds of situations that don't rise to the level of bodily harm or death. And the language as written is prohibiting that SRO from taking any physical, uh, uh, or or using any physical force or restraint, uh, uh, to involve himself in the situation. Um. Chief Schultz, uh, you were a SRO in in your past. Um, I think it would be really helpful for our audience to hear from you, um, some of the the thoughts you have about the position and the type of officer that that shows interest in those positions and fills those positions. Can you, can you talk a little bit about your life as an SRO and the value that SROs bring to our schools?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I served as an SRO for three years in, um, in the Roseville Area High School. And, um, to this day, I I I state that, uh, that assignment was probably the most beneficial assignment of my career. Um, I learned more in that job uh, about our community, about our kids, about how to, uh, deal with different types of people and, um, and, you know, really truly interact and engage our community. Um, so for me, it was, it was a very beneficial assignment. Um, and, you know, I think in in most regards, an SRO, a school resource officer is is an officer who has a bit of experience on the street, who may want to try to, uh, broaden their career aspects, you know, that they want to try something new. And it's a good stepping stone into investigations or whatever other path they might want to choose. And, uh, it's and it's a, it's a commitment to your community. And so most of the school resource officers that I've ever met have been outstanding police officers who are really, really geared toward, um, making those relationships, uh, those positive relationships with kids. Um, and and focusing on, you know, being there to, uh, to be a role model essentially. Um, yes, there are times where, you know, the school requests assistance of a of a police officer in a SRO role to help, uh, you know, in a situation that may need, uh, to to use force. But, uh, you know, the the interesting thing about this, um, this, uh, this bill as it was passed and this omnibus bill, um, you you notice that the first title of the, uh, one twenty-one A five eight is, uh, Corporal Punishment. Well, police officers have never, never used corporal punishment. It's not in our vocabulary. We've never trained for it. We're not, our job is not to punish people. Our job is to control. Our job is to restrain and keep safe. And, um, you know, and 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 to to cloud, uh, the the six oh nine oh six language that we've been using to guide, uh, our use of force and control and and restraint um, it it for years, for careers with a new, um, you know, a new standard, so to speak, uh, that falls, in my opinion, under this purview of of corporal punishment. Um, it just doesn't make sense. And I I don't see where, um, where it's coming from essentially. Um, but, uh, with that, it has created some challenges. Um, and we're going to try to see what we can do to be creative, to to to, you know, to still respond to our schools, to still provide the safety measures that those kids need, those teachers and staff members need. Um, but, uh, it it's, uh, it's a work in progress.
Right, right. So you mentioned the conflict that exists between the the traditional or the standing authorization to use force and then this new language in the education bills. Um, obviously, that conflict is at the root of the issue here and is is why so many police chiefs and sheriffs made the decision to pull their officers. Um, can you share, just in more detail, the decision-making process that you went through? And Whyzata went through, uh, you know, it was a difficult decision, I'm sure. Uh, but share some more thoughts and 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 the process that you used to come to the decision you did.
Yeah, for sure. We, you know, like many, s- sort of stumbled upon this. Uh, I think the Minnesota Chiefs, uh, put out a uh, a blast on this and and wanted to make officers, chiefs aware around the state. So we took a hard look at it and in looking at one twenty-one A point five eight and one twenty-one A five, uh, five eight two, um, they play off of each other, as you, as you mentioned. Um. It it not only mentions SROs specifically as an agent of the school, um, but it also then restricts, uh, certain types of holds that could be used in a, in a typical use of force situation by a normal officer. And then in that regard, it carries over into one twenty-one A five eight two. Again, the title of, uh, SRO as an agent of the school, so it brings it back into that, that statute. And then it it really further, as you mentioned, um, you know, limits the amount of or the the types of of restraint or the circumstances that may result in a need for restraint. And it's, uh, it's rather confusing for our people. So one of the things that I'm an advocate for training. Everything we do in law enforcement is a is a foundation of training. And many of our officers for their entire careers have been training on six oh nine oh six, although it evolves. We train as soon as it does. We train as soon as it does, and we rely on that training to react in situations that require us to react in split seconds. And we get pretty good at it. And when now there's a new requirement or a new hurdle that's thrown in our way and we're told to, as officers of the school, told to throw what you've learned in the, in the, in the past away, and now you're being held to this new standard with only a couple of weeks before school coming. It was really scary. A lot of our officers, my school resource officer, I share Plymouth Police Department. It's also got school resource officers in our district. Many of our school resource officers were very apprehensive to go back to school without adequate training. And so we consulted with our county attorneys, we consulted with our city attorneys. We consulted with the League of Minnesota Cities on the legality. We appreciate the attorney general's opinion on certain aspects of the language, but that still didn't, you know, satisfy our questions with many other aspects. And ultimately, our district made the decision, I, Chief Fadden, made the decision to suspend our SROs from the schools temporarily, hoping that something would change and we would get them right back into it. And once we did that, then we had to focus on how can we still provide those services to the school? We don't enjoy the revenue from a contract. We typically would because now we're we're not agents of the school, but we're still committed to that school. And so our SRO is in a squad car working school hours Monday through Friday. He's going to respond to everything that happens in a timely manner. We are not far from the school. We're a small village here in Wayzetta and he still has the time to go check on buses. He still has the time to, you know, meet with teachers and staff and recess and lunch. And I told him, we're huge in community engagement. That's your community. Go engage. You don't have to be an agent of the school to go and engage with them. So but ultimately, we'd love to get our SROs back in the school.
Great. Thank you. So let me just clarify for the viewers. So by pulling back, by not signing the contract, your the officer that would have served as your SRO is no longer an agent of the school and therefore is bound by the traditional use of force statute. And that's really the workaround that most agencies are going with. Those officers, it sounds like to me, those officers are still kind of dedicated for school response and that type of thing. But they're not bound by this new language as an agent of the school district. Is that an accurate summation?
That's correct.
Okay. Chief Paulson, if I can move on to you, you are one of the chiefs that made the decision and a difficult one, I'm sure, to come up with some workarounds so that Lakeville could continue to serve as SROs in in the Lakeville schools. Can you talk about that decision-making process?
Yeah, and you're right. It was a difficult one and it continues to be a difficult one. But the way we, you know, just handle these things is you try to get all the stakeholders together and understand what issues the legislation or the issue present. For us, it's obviously, you know, the school district, our schools, our officers that are working in those schools. We have three in Lakeville, one at each North and South High School and one that shares the middle schools. Those officers, their input was, was huge in our decision-making. Legal advice from our city and county attorneys. And so weighing all those things, we decided to keep them in the schools for now, but I think one of the misnomers floating around out there is that those agencies that are keeping SROs in the schools are satisfied or in agreement that this, this is a good thing. And that's, that's not the case. We are just as frustrated, just as concerned and want resolution just as much as anybody else. We just decided that our SROs have such value in those schools. Our schools want them there. They didn't push for this issue. They're not to blame for the position we're in. And so we want them there for the day to day, the checking in on kids, building those relationships, being those mentors. Obviously there, if something imminent happens, obviously the response time is much quicker if you have an officer in the building. But for all those gray areas, those in-betweens which we've highlighted here, we have our road response officers that will supplement them. And I think that's, that's the workaround that we've found right now. You know, the root of some of these issues is the lack of understanding of what law enforcement really is. We push the humanizing of the badge so much, just in community, in community in general. Big piece of that is in our schools. So our officers can be seen by students and staff members as human beings, real people, someone to bounce problems off of, share excitement with. And you lose that when our only role is to come in and be the enforcer when something bad has happened. And so we want to keep that positive relationship in place, but it's challenging that we have three experienced SROs. They've been in the schools for a while. They've been officers for a while. We're putting a lot of trust in their judgment to navigate this, but it's awfully challenging for them. And we've had some issues already where they've had to respond or behave differently with the new legislation, which has been problematic.
Right. You said something interesting when you started there about you know, the number of schools that have just made the decision to keep their officers or number of departments that have made their decision to keep their officers in the schools. That doesn't mean that they don't have concerns. And I think we saw that earlier this week. I believe it was Woodbury. They had started out the school year maintaining their officers and maintaining their program. And if I read it right, they did so because they believed there was a solution and a fix that was going to happen real early on. And after the governor made clear on Friday that he wasn't going to call a special session, at least for now, they made the decision on Tuesday to pull their officer. So yeah, it's weighing heavily on the minds of all of the police departments in the state. Let me change gears just slightly. We haven't spoken with Catherine Wigfall yet, and I want to involve her in the, in the panel here. There's been a bit of an effort to paint the picture that SROs are or paint SROs in more of a negative light and suggest that, you know, school unions might be suggesting that school faculty don't really truly value SROs and they may prefer that SROs aren't in schools. Can you shed some light on that whole issue or that narrative and share what some of the polling actually says about that?
Sure. David, thanks for having me. So a lot of the perceptions of SROs themselves from, you know, school personnel, students come from polling, teachers. And so I have stories of teachers coming to me personally with concerns about their safety, but we also have polling and surveys that show that the majority of teachers actually do support having school resource officers, not only in schools across the country, but in their own schools. So it's a little dated because just of the frequency with which polls are given, but I wanted to point out a poll that was done by Education Week, their EdWeek Research Center. This was actually done in June 2020. So following the death of George Floyd in May 2020, where we really saw the debate over the presence of SROs come under scrutiny, schools rethinking having SROs in their, in their schools and that sort of thing. And this poll found that only 23% of educators supported removing police officers from schools and more than half, 54%, believe that armed police officers belong in the schools and the districts in which they work. So teachers' voices have largely been absent from this current debate. And so it would be important to get their feedback. Does this still hold true? Especially following COVID and school closures, there's been an uptick in discipline and and classroom issues and that sort of thing. And so I think it's important that we involve them in the conversation and get their input. Do you feel safe? Do you feel that you have support not only from an SRO, but from school admin? And then I also want to mention polling from students on this topic because I think their perspective is also important. SROs not only are there to keep schools safe and to handle situations, but there's been polling done in the past several years that show that the majority of SROs actually get involved in counseling activities and student mentoring on the daily. So they are there forming relationships and friendships with students, but also want to be there for students to come to them with concerns. And we see that students trust them with that. The majority of students value their presence. So there's a student survey, a Minnesota student survey that the Department of Ed gives to school districts to administer. It's done every three years. So the last one was done in 2022. And eighth graders, ninth graders and 11th graders were asked about their feelings about school resource officers, police officers in their schools. And the majority of students who participated said that they did have a school resource officer or a police officer in their schools. And 94% of eighth graders, 94% of ninth graders and 91 of 11th graders agreed that it was a good idea to have an SRO or police officer at their school. So we're hearing from students that they see the role of SROs as positive. We've heard from teachers in the past, they want SROs to remain in schools. And so these are voices that must be part of this conversation as we decide what next steps include moving forward.
That's awesome information and good to hear. There, there just seems to be so much disinformation out there or misinformation on this topic. And maybe we can just spend a minute on that. If I can call on maybe Senator Duckworth, there's been mention of, I think the governor alluded to the fact that, well, the League of Minnesota Cities has weighed in and they've, you know, there's no issue to this on an insurance level. And so that issue is behind us and there's misinformation about prone restraints and while they're banned in prison, but and we're not willing to ban them in our schools. And you know, there's a lot of misinformation about what's actually banned in prisons and such. Can you speak to some of the misinformation out there, Senator, and why it's so important that we get to the facts?
Sure. I'd be happy to. I probably won't have time to cover all of it, but I'll stick to the highlights on it. First and foremost, some of the misinformation out there is that this is being purposely politicized by some folks. All of a sudden, people have problems with lawmakers and law enforcement, school officials and those holding press conferences to talk about their concerns regarding certain laws. That's not politicizing something. That's seeking a solution. That's trying to bring people together in a bipartisan fashion to address something, to fix something, to help kids, teachers and schools. I appreciate the information that was just shared. It's not just kids and teachers that see the value in SROs. It's parents as well. I sat on that Lakeville School Board where Chief Paulson has his SROs and he talked about that SRO officer that is in the middle schools. That came about due to a referendum that was brought to voters. They voted on past and approved the additional funding because they wanted that third SRO traveling between the middle school buildings in that community as well. So misinformation here is that people don't want SROs. They don't see value in them. They don't serve a purpose. Nothing could be further from the truth. The governor stated during an interview at the state fair that he's not aware of any point in state history of a school resource officer being accused of or charged of using excessive or unreasonable force on a student, period. So that begs the question, why the law? Number two, there was another study that came out, or at least referenced by a news source that said school resource officers have been shown to help reduce violent incidents in schools by 30% at a minimum. So we haven't had an issue with school resource officers and how they interact with students. We know they reduce a violent incidence. Why wouldn't we try to address a law that has had the unintended consequence of pulling these folks out of schools? I think the biggest false narrative regarding this is the premise that some are trying to perpetuate that our school or that our law enforcement obviously don't have the safety of our students, teachers and school at the forefront of everything they do. That could be further from the truth. Many people in law enforcement, especially school resource officers, stop that profession to serve and protect our most vulnerable, to include our kids. So to suggest that they're, they want to do anything other than provide them safeguarding and protection while they're in school to learn is just an absurd distraction regarding this whole our whole discussion that we're trying to have so that we can actually come together, collaborate across the aisle and pass a solution on this.
Very well said. So let's move on to how can we fix this situation and get our SROs back in school? And I guess what, since you're still on the screen, Senator Duckworth, I know you've done a lot of work on drafting some some new legislation or some amendments to what got passed. Can you talk about about that process and where we're at with that?
Sure. I'd be happy to. So initially, when we realized this was an issue, we just, I said, hey, draft a bill so that, you know, if we're going to talk about this, we can at least propose a solution. And the quickest thing that we could come up with is, hey, let's just repeal the aspect of the law that's a problem. That way we can get school resource officers back in buildings. And if we need to rediscuss this or dive into it deeper when we start session next February, let's do it. But for now, clearly, everybody agrees this is an issue. Let's just pull it off the books in a special session so we can get back to normal. Okay? Well, obviously, maybe folks have an issue with that. So in order to show folks that there are people that are willing to work on this, I've drafted other bills and produced other language and have had conversations with folks that are representing and working with law enforcement, folks across the aisle to say, hey, unless we're having a conversation, unless we're proposing certain solutions to this, we're never going to get there. As you mentioned, the governor, I think last Friday before he left the country for a trip to Japan, said, this isn't an issue anymore. This has been clarified. It's been fixed. Well, if that's the case, why did Woodbury just pull their SROs out? Right? We have to be crystal clear with the people of Minnesota and we cannot be misrepresenting what's actually occurring. There has not been a fix. There is not clarity. We just heard from these two highly respected gentlemen in their field, in their profession that they're desiring clarity in the law. They want to fix here. So for the speaker, for the governor, and I'm not trying to be very political here. I'm just stating the facts. For them to come out and say, there's not an issue. We know your profession better than you do, I think is very disingenuous while they're also saying, but we still want to try to find a solution. If you want to find a solution, let's talk about this transparently, openly in the public with stakeholders. Let's have a special session. Let's pass a fix and actually do what the people of Minnesota are expecting and demanding us to do.
Awesome. Representative Hudson, how? What's the process for calling a special session?
The process is the governor needs to call it. That's basically it. I mean, that's the simple thing, right? He could just call a special session, but in reality, it's obviously more complicated than that. He has to have the political will on his side of the aisle to actually arrive at a solution. And what we've seen, going back to your question about narratives surrounding this issue is that the Democrats are wildly split regarding what they're saying and what they're thinking about this issue. They have many different contradictory narratives, everything from there's nothing to see here. Nobody knows what they're talking about, that apparently including law enforcement agencies and the lawyers who are advising them to SROs are somehow fascistic and shouldn't be in the schools. And it's a good thing that they're being pulled out. So they have all these contradictory narratives, which is indicative of the divide within the Democratic caucuses legislatively regarding where they're at. You've got everybody from Dan Wogomont in St. Cloud, who is basically with us on this, saying we need to have a special session and fix it to, you know, Representative Lee Finkie and the more radical side of the caucuses stating that this is great. This is wonderful. We should pull the cops from all the schools. And so the real path forward on this for the governor is to do something that the current, and I, with all due respect to my honorable colleague Senator Duckworth, I will make this political because that's how this started. This is the consequence of politics. This is the consequence of radical Democrats within both caucuses making the decision that they were going to value ideology above the safety of children and above the practical utility of law enforcement agencies to do their jobs in service of our schools. They decided to make this political by inserting this provision into the education omnibus bill in the way they did, circumventing the Public Safety Committee and resulting in what we're seeing on the ground right now. And the reasonable adult in the room solution would be for the governor to come to the minority caucuses, to come to Republicans in the Senate and the House and say, all right, let's patch together a bipartisan majority that can fix this. And it could and should be something as simple as what Senator Duckworth is suggesting, just repeal the problematic language. And we can have a conversation about what SRO should look like going forward next February. It would be a very simple thing to do. It could probably happen within 24 hours if the governor was serious about it, but apparently he's not.
Thank you. Chiefs, absent a legislative fix, and hopefully we'll, we'll get one, but absent that, what are, you've talked a little bit about some of the workarounds. what are, you've talked a little bit about some of the workarounds, um, but, can you flesh that out a little bit more? What's the long-term operating picture look like for your agency if there isn't a change to the language?
Well, I can just speak briefly. I mean, we have conversations, uh, almost daily at this point, including checking in with our SROs. I mean, none of what we're doing now is permanent, it's all fluid and it, it depends a little bit on how this is going. I think, uh, everybody, um, from the Lakeville Police Department, Lakeville Schools that are involved are hopeful that there is a fix and that we can keep this relationship in place to, to buy some time. Uh, if it does get prolonged, uh, you know, we have to look at, what makes the most sense for us. I, I think, one of the biggest issues is the, is the clarity or lack of clarity, the ambiguity which others have talked about in the law and, a lot of times what clears that up is a test case, right? That goes through the court system and nobody wants to see that play out because usually that's something, uh, fairly negative, but, uh, something like that could impact how things look on our end too. You know, we've, we've heard, uh, a lot of different legal interpretations of the, the law as it's written. And, uh, some, you know, feel like it's not as restrictive as we feel it is. Some feel like it's more than we feel it is. And for our officers to, to respond appropriately, they need clarity and they need training. And, um, when we can't even agree on how to interpret the law, it's awfully tough to do that and we're putting them in a tough position. And the longer we do that, the, the more likely we are to have a, a scenario or situation that's problematic. So, we'll take it day by day for now and, and hope that, uh, a fix is in place sooner rather than later.
You know, and if, if a fix isn't in place, uh, imminently, um, we have to look forward to solutions that we can try to make that better this situation. So, um, we've talked about, you know, keeping our school resource officer, former school resource officer in a position where he's able to address the school issues with a squad car, um, quickly. Um, there's, uh, you know, still, he has still has connections within the school. Um, so access to the school, he can go and do his community engagement there. Um, but short of that, if, if nothing's changing, uh, like anything else in law enforcement, we're going to have to train to adapt to these new requirements. And, uh, that's really where the liability, you know, for us sits is throwing a police officer into a school with new requirements, new restrictions and not having them been trained on it. And so, um, that could be the next focus. Uh, I'd hope that this, uh, could get changed at the legislative level before we throw that little bit of confusion in there, but, uh, that may be where we have to go.
Great. Well, let's move on and spend the,
Oh, sorry to, sorry to interrupt, but can I give a, a little bit of a teacher's point of view of what they're talking? Okay, thank you. Because, and first of all, as a legislator who is a teacher, was a teacher for a long, this was a political move. It was an accidental insert in that bill. It's part of a larger picture, unfortunately, of a segment of the left who wants to defame and defund our law enforcement and it's causing a lot of problems. Um, law enforcement in general and public safety up in the cities. And now it's working into our schools and I don't want to see this come into our schools. School resource officers are excellent and we need them and, and I've talked to so many teachers and, um, administrators and schools are not the same. People need to understand, students have changed a lot. I don't, we can talk about the cause, but there are many more, um, behavior issues. I have elementary school teachers that are veterans who are saying, I'm going to quit because I can't handle this. Just regular kids. This is at the elementary level. You get up to the senior high level, you saw what happened to Mankato East recently with the fights. There, there are many more violent fights. We have our Level Four School down here in Southern Minnesota that they can't even get insurance for their teachers because of all the injuries. They have broken legs, broken noses. So, things have changed and unfortunately, sadly, we need to move law enforcement in for a good reason. And so, this is important that we get these SROs back for the schools that want them. Those that don't want them don't have to. But, um, it is needed. Albert Lee just added a second SRO. Um, right now they are still in our, um, schools, but I've been in close contact with our police chief here and he's really watching things. He said, we can't keep them in forever if this doesn't get fixed. So, it's an issue. It's a greater picture of behaviors and lack of expectations in schools, lack of consequences, um, and accountability for students, which is needs to be learned young because then we see it as adults and they are interacting with law enforcement. We have all these defiant situations that cause a lot of bodily harm for both police officers and the, the, uh, people involved. So I just wanted to add that this is a huge societal thing and we need these SROs in our schools because they can make the connections that are needed to help, um, bridge these gaps between law enforcement and students and also help keep everybody safe.
Great. Well, let's use the remaining, uh, few minutes here of our webinar to, uh, go to some of the participants questions and I've selected a first one here. I'll direct this to the police chiefs, um. Even some non-SRO officers are likely to experience the chilling effect of this law when they enter a school when being called in. Can you comment on that aspect? And I, I'm guessing what, what this question is getting at is, the officers that respond now, based on this new law that was, uh, passed, are they going to be apprehensive to use the techniques that they are authorized to use to bring order to a situation?
Well, I can answer and Chief Schultz can certainly add, but, uh, I mean, it's so foreign to anything we've done where you can deal with, uh, one of your partners on a situation and, and you have a different set of standards than they do. Uh, one of the huge benefits of having those SROs is they know, um, they know their buildings, they know which classrooms are where and which offices are where. So, uh, one of the challenges for someone coming in off the road is first of all, finding where the, the problem is, right? Um, which in bigger schools can be challenging at times and delays some of the response. But then once you get there and having a partner that, uh, may or may not be able to assist you in taking someone into custody or, or dealing with a situation, escorting someone out of the school. Uh, it's just so different and, and foreign. And I think when someone asks me, you know, what is the big issue here? I just, that's the picture I paint when you have two, two police officers with the same police department have gone through the same training. One can do something that someone else can't, or one cannot do something that someone else can in different settings. It just, it, it does ju- does not pass the, the common sense test and that's what we're trying to, to clean up. So it does make a difference, grieving those officers not working in the schools.
Move on to another, we'll try to get one more question in before our time is up. So the, this kind of speaks to some of the misunderstanding about what's going on. Uh, this viewer asks, so if the bill has been available since February, why the urgency to call a special session? Schools can have SRO officers in school. Um, Representative Hudson, do you want to take that?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you. Um, sure, they can have an SRO officer in name only. They can have an SRO officer as a bluff um, and hope that, uh, students just deescalate on their own without any real um, possibility of an effective intervention. Look, the absurdity of this situation was just outlined, um, by the chief and that's the idea that th- these techniques potentially, um, the ones that are vaguely precluded by this provision are completely inappropriate when, uh, utilized by a school resource officer. But that same person can get on their radio or a staff member can call nine-one-one and bring in an officer from the street and all of a sudden those techniques become appropriate? Why? Because the person came from a squad car outside rather than being stationed in the school? Um, even on their own premise, even under the premise that's offered, that these techniques are inappropriate to utilize with students. It calls to question, well, why did you exclusively prohibit them just for school resource officers and school staffs to? Then, you know, how does it become appropriate? If it's an officer coming from off the street? And of course, in reality, we know that it's appropriate in all circumstances. Uh, because absent this provision, the, the standard that would govern officer behavior and officer technique is the reasonable use of force standard. And so what they have in effect, in effect done is preemptively preclude a vague swath of reasonable uses of force from being utilized in the school for no reason. You know, the reasonable use of force standard is something that would be adjudicated after the fact by a judge, by investigators to determine whether or not the officer acted appropriately. What the legislature has done is said that we are going to decide before the fact that there are no circumstances under which these techniques would be reasonable. Um, and as to the, the spirit of the question asking about this language being available in February, there were over three thousand bills introduced this legislative session. Um, dozens and dozens and dozens of bills that were ultimately crammed into omnibus, uh, bills and passed. The the rate at which legislation made its way through the process taxed the capacity, the professional capacity of legislative staffers, of the reviser's office, of journalists, of people who have been doing this for years. Folks who watch the Capitol full-time and get paid to do so didn't know what was going on this legislative session because that's how fast they were moving and how much they were cramming through into these bills without scrutiny. Part of the reason for having a committee process is to actually examine all of these different provisions from the perspective of the various jurisdictions so that we can discover as a public, as an electorate, what it is that our elected officials are actually doing. The Democrats bypassed that process and that is why we are discovering the impact of their past legislation months after it's actually been passed.
David, if, if I may, I know we're running short on time, but can I add to that briefly? Um, you know, one of the, so Walter's a hundred and ten percent correct and one of the things, this is one of the arguments, it's, it keeps coming up to distract from the fact that we have an, an issue at hand today. Hindsight is twenty twenty. Uh, there are so many things that we could have done differently, knowing what we now know, the fact that we have school resource officers being pulled out of buildings. The, first off, a concern about the law was brought up during session, but even if that hadn't happened, our job as legislators is to listen and to lead. And if we're listening right now, we are hearing from just about everybody that we have got a significant issue on our hands that needs to be solved. So now is the time to lead. And we do that with the special session to make this fix. Whether or not this was discussed or not discussed however long ago is irrelevant because the problem exists today. This is the problem that our teachers, our kids, our parents, our school administrators are dealing with right here, right now, this school year. I could care less what happened last February. I care about protecting them today and tomorrow.
Thank you. Well, with that, we have, uh, come to the end of our time allotted for this webinar. And so I want to once again thank our panelists for joining, uh, and providing clarity on this important issue. As we sign off, just another reminder to visit americanexperiment.org backslash S R O to join our call to action encouraging Governor Walz to call a special session to provide clarity and get our SROs back in school. Thanks again to everyone and have a good day.